Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday meeting of the Derry School Board. We are all here tonight, but Lynn Perkins is going to be remote. So we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we will begin tonight with the approval of minutes. We have the public minutes from the May 11th meeting and private minutes for the May 13th meeting.
Motion to approve.
All in favor? Motion passes. We will now move on to the COVID update, which, Mary Ann, to you.
Okay, so, good evening, everyone. I'm going to start, and then I am going to turn the floor over to Susan Linehan and Dr. Chris Peterson. Our safety measures and procedures have worked to keep our students and staff safe and in school most of this year. Members of the Derry School District's pandemic response team continue to consult with healthcare experts of our response team on a regular and consistent basis to discuss issues, work through questions, and make decisions. During the summer, we will continue to communicate, receive advice, and adjust the 221-22 reopening plan accordingly, since the plan is due, and you'll hear this in my report later on this evening, on June 23rd, to the Department of Education. I will expand on that later in my superintendent's report. The same process that will be used throughout this year will be used this summer, and will be followed for our Learning Pass and our extended school year programs. In order to expedite this a little bit tonight, and not to repeat at all, Dr. Peterson and Sue Linehan, our South Range school nurse and our district team leader, who have been presenting throughout the year at different intervals, will begin to expand on our data and present slides from their weekly calls with New Hampshire partners from the New Hampshire Department of Public Health. So tonight, as you can see at the table, we have Susan Linehan and Dr. Chris Peterson. Thank you again for being here tonight, and we welcome you to our school board meeting.
I guess, if you could put up Slide A, that would be, that'd be great. So, you know, I wanted to start off just kind of recapping where we are right now. And from a COVID situation or standpoint, we're in a really good place compared to January. So if you read the top part of that slide, and that's from, that's from today's, from the state, the average of 107 cases per day over the last seven-day period, which is a 29 decrease compared to the last seven-day period. If you go to the next slide, David, it's a blow-up of that graph in the middle. And I want to focus on that, that slide, because it does show that we've come down a good deal. But what also it shows is that we're not below where we were in September. And so when we came up with our mitigation strategies, our number was lower than where we are right now. And so even though we're 107, we started the school year much, much less than that. We started the school year with three to six feet of distancing. We started the school year with mandatory masks. And I would, you know, you can see from the graph, and that's dramatic, where we were from January to now. But we're still in a substantial spread situation in our state. So I have a few slides that I took off, literally screenshots, from the state's, the state's kind of weekly conference with healthcare providers. And currently, the CDC, as of, recently as May 13th, if you look at that last bullet point, CDC continues to recommend everyone wears face masks and physically distance in certain settings, including schools. This is from the CDC, on the 13th. The next slide. So this is from, this is from the New Hampshire DHHS. They are recommending people that are fully vaccinated that you still wear masks. This is a little bit of a deviation from the CDC. But CDC's own data suggests that if you vaccinate or you wear masks, you don't get out as quickly as if you do both together. And that's DHHS's standpoint. Is the end run here is getting away from this as quickly as we can. And so you have pharmacologic and non-pharmacologic interventions. And again, we know if we twine those together, we're going to be in a place, a better place, a lot faster than if we have them singularly. Dave, next slide, please. So this is just, again, a little graphic. If you are fully immunized, meaning you're two weeks out from your last immunization, or with, obviously with the J&amp;J product, it's just one and done. But there are times that you should be wearing a mask. If you are in a place where you don't know what the vaccination status of other people are, you should be wearing a mask when you're out. And that's kind of what this, that red box is saying, is vaccination status unknown. Is, if that's yes, if you're indoors, you should be wearing your mask, even if you're fully vaccinated. Next slide, David, please. People who are unvaccinated or partially vaccinated should continue to wear masks. And the businesses and organizations make rules that would suit for them based on what their population is. In our school district, pretty much all the students are less than 12. And so we have a situation where our entire population is unvaccinated. Next slide, please. Thank you, David. This is a little bit old data, so this was from Thursday. We now know that, well, this says 50% of New Hampshire's population is fully vaccinated. We now know that 70% of our population has had at least one vaccine. We're getting close, right? I mean, this herd immunity should be pushing in pretty soon. And we're going to continue, hopefully, to see our numbers come down. And I think that is going to inform what we do for September. But we have three weeks left of school. And I have to say that it's worked thus far. We're still seeing a lot of cases. Certainly, like I said, less than over the winter, but still seeing a lot of cases. And I think that masks are important. If we look at our teachers, so vaccines, just rough numbers, about 95% effective. Quick math would say 1 in 20 people aren't vaccinated, even though they've gotten the shot. And so if you've got 40 teachers, 60 teachers, that's two to three people within your population that you don't know whether they're truly vaccinated or not. So we need to, we need to push the total number up past 80, 85 in order to protect that 1 in 20, excuse me, 1 in 20 people that aren't truly immunized. And that's that, that's the principle of that herd immunity. Next slide, please, David. Thank you. Really small. Sorry, didn't realize that that was going to be so small. But basically, what this is saying is that there are data now to show that masks are not a health risk. The next slide is really busy. A lot of data on it, but essentially, CDC looked at a number of factors, both exercise and risk, and put people on monitors, and looked at what their numbers were and their physiology was. And although there were some folks that complained of dyspnea, that, geez, I'm having trouble getting my breath. I know I have had that one. I've run up a set of stairs, and then I'm in a room talking to somebody real fast, and I feel like, oh, my gosh, I've got to slow this down, because I can't get enough air in. And you just slow it down, and it goes away. That dyspnea definitely is there, but it's not physiologic. That's up in our brains. And so masks have been, A, shown to be effective, and B, have not been shown to be a health risk for wearers and users. That's pretty much all I have. Questions about what I had to say? Summary, we still have a lot of COVID. Masks have worked. Distancing works. I think we need to continue to hold to that course through the end of the school year. And then we reassess over the summer. It'll be a fun summer, us all sweating together in little rooms and doing virtual conferences, trying to figure out what, what makes the most sense as this continues to evolve. Sue?
Yeah, I was just going to add a couple of things. I actually surveyed all the nurses in the district today, and, speaking to your last slide, Chris, and I asked if the, if we had seen, if anybody had seen a child that had a medical issue related to mask-wearing. And take away the very few kids who, at the beginning of this, had medical condition, whatever that may be, skin issues with the face. Take away those who had accommodations made from asking. All of the nurses said there was not one case of the kids either having a medical issue related to the masks or even complaining to the nurse about wearing masks. So that's, that was good news. I wanted to talk to all the nurses about that. I do know it's going to be getting hot, and tomorrow is going to be hot. But it was hot in the fall, too. And, you know, we will put things in place, you know, greater mask breaks, you know, using of the tents and natural shade and extra water, and water stations for the kids, and make sure that they have water bottles and things like that to get us through the next 12 days. What we've done in this year has clearly worked. And just to give, just a couple of more numbers, consistent what's happening in the community and within the state, and we're seeing the drop, we still are not seeing zero cases by any means. But between February break and April break, we had a total of 40 cases within our school district. That resulted in a lot of kids being quarantined, you know, 70 kids and maybe 11 staff being quarantined between February and April break. Now, some of the guidance has changed on quarantine, so, but since we came back from April break, we've had a total of 10 positive cases. So from then till now, and we've only needed in-school to quarantine one student because of that, because of a really close contact within school. We've identified no in-school transmission, so what we're doing is right. And if anybody sees a playground, or when kids are gathering outside, outside of middle school, they're close. There's no distancing. And, and so we will, you know, do everything we can. We're as fortunate that we have nurses in every school and amazing teachers and staff who will offer those breaks and make sure the kids are able to maintain these, these levels of protection that we put into place for them. And then it will be revisited as we move on to the, to the next guidance.
Any questions?
What about recess? Recession?
What about recess?
Yeah. Can they, can kids not wear their mask at recess?
So that's what we're talking, you know, and I know, I would love to say that kids can't wear, don't wear masks at recess. It's not what the CDC nor DHHS is saying, nor Dr. Peterson. Am I correct? You know, I would love to be able to say that, but you, if you go out and watch those kids, there are a lot of, they play together. And so, and there, we do have other kids who, we have kids in the district that are vulnerable, you know, more vulnerable than others. And we just have to make sure we protect everybody. None of those kids are vaccinated. And so we're, according to what the CDC and DHHS and Dr. Peterson, we're going to stick with the masks and, you know, try to fit in extra, extra breaks and stress with the kids that, you know, during these hotter days, they need to take them up, you know, moving forward, hopefully, after these next 12 days or 13 days, whatever it is.
How about in a setting, if they use a tent and they're separated, can they remove their masks?
So if there's greater than six feet distance and they're outside, absolutely. Absolutely. If they, in a lot of the places, we have kind of, kids know from being here all year long. If you want to take a mask break, you go sit there, you go sit there. You watch the kindergarten classes outside, and they have circles drawn on the floor, ground, and things like that. So absolutely. And, you know, that, that will be encouraged more, for sure. I think the tents will be helpful in the next two and a half weeks while we're here.
It's been, it's been a really busy, long year, and I agree with you. We've got three weeks left. Let's keep everybody safe. But I don't, I don't know that we'll see you again before the end of the school year, so I want to be sure to say thank you. You've really given us great guidance. I know it's not been easy. It's not been easy for any of us either. It's not been easy for anybody in the schools. But you've, you've really given us really, really good guidance, as shown by how long we've been in school. And I want you to know that I really appreciate it. As hard as it's been, I appreciate it.
Well, thank you. And as my twin separated from birth said, "I'll be back."
And I think it's important to realize and reemphasize, we've gone through a consistent process in our decision-making. It's not whimsical. You know, we definitely question at times and re-question, and come up with maybe different ways of asking the question, and often get the same answer, and that's okay. We can agree to disagree, and at the end of the day, you know, we follow what is prescribed by our healthcare experts. And I think that's really important, as we have throughout the year. Looking forward, things can be, things will be reevaluated and perhaps even change. We, that's kind of, that's the unknown aspect at this time. And, Chris, and so you both alluded to that and actually said it. So we don't know what is going to be in our 21-22 plan. And even if it is put in writing in our 21-22 plan, the caveat in that plan will be things can change. Things are always subject to change. Conditions are always subject to change. So I think we really need to realize that, even going back a step to our Summer Learning Pass program and our ESY. That is the first thing. And we are actually meeting this Friday. We have another meeting, because, and that's what I mean, on a consistent basis, we meet. And even between times, if we just don't have a scheduled meeting, I pick up the phone, call Sue, call Chris, and we have those ongoing discussions in between our meetings as well.
Any other questions? Any other comments? Thank you, guys. Thank you for trusting our council and, you know, putting our children at the forefront of our decision-making. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much for all of your guidance this year. I'll echo what Brenda said. It's been a really tough year, but you've kept our kids safe, and you've given sound, sound reasoning and sound advice so that people can really believe in what you say and understand why we've made the decisions we have. So I thank you both, wholeheartedly.
Thank you.
And we do, every principal was contacted today about the water stations. Jane, we worked with custodians today, and, you know, those are ready for tomorrow. From my understanding, that additional water stations are ready for outside, and students can bring water bottles as they usually do. And so in order to refill outside instead of having them refilled inside. And that was a mitigation strategy that has not been put in place yet, but will. And Sue and I talked about that during the day today. So I think for your expertise, your time, and as always, being flexible enough to come to board meetings at any time.
My pleasure. Thanks, guys.
Thanks for having us.
All right, thank you.
Thank you both very much, once again. I will now pass it to Mary Ann for personnel.
Thanks again, Sue and Chris. Appreciate it. All right, personnel. I have a resignation to ask you to vote on. I have the resignation of Chris Callen, our Assistant Superintendent. It is, I will say that it's always hard when longtime, longtime-serving employees leave the districts. We appreciate everyone's service, and we wish him the best of luck in his future endeavors.
Can I, can I just say something also, if you don't mind? Chris has been with us for a really long time, and he's given a lot to our district, and he's really worked hard for our special ed students and our families and all. So we wish him well in his new endeavors, so.
Yeah, I'll mirror that sentiment. And every year when we get the audit from the state on the special education, and we hit it out of the park every year, that's, you know, one of his, his programs he's developed over the years. And many of those programs have saved this district a lot of money. And I think we're starting to see some of those programs move into Pinkerton and save some money there as well. So certainly sad to see Chris go, but I know he's moving on and will do well where he goes. So I will make a motion to accept the resignation.
And a second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, I also have nominations this evening. The first nomination, I will actually ask her to come up to the table. Christina LeBelchuk, for Director of Child Nutrition District-wide. So Christina, welcome.
Thank you.
We are glad to have you here this evening.
Thank you.
You're a very familiar face within the district. And Christina, would you like to tell the public a little bit about yourself and give a little bit of background? And proceed with that?
Sure. I've been with the Derry School District since November of 2017, working here at West Running Brook Middle School as the Kitchen Manager and helping to oversee a few of the other elementary schools throughout the district. I've worked side-by-side with Susan Baroskis, the current Food Service Director, and I've learned a lot from her about the child nutrition. Prior to that, I am a graduate of Southern New Hampshire University with an Associate's Degree in Culinary Arts and a Bachelor's in Restaurant Management. After I did receive my degrees, I worked at a few resort locations, such as Martha's Vineyard, Lake Sunapee, before I settled down and started working for Brinker International, which at that time owned Chili's Grill and Bar, among other restaurant chains. I worked on the corporate training team, traveling around New England, opening different restaurants as a back-of-the-house trainer. And then from there, I became a restaurant manager, and I worked for them for approximately 14 years. When I stepped out of the restaurant business to have a family, I kind of put it on the back burner. But now that my boys are a little bit older, I've started to refocus myself. And since I've been here in the district for almost four years now, I'm moving forward and moving into the Food Service Director's position. Very excited about that. It'll be a nice change, change of environment.
Sophie?
I didn't know if anybody was going to ask any questions, otherwise I'll, I'll add to that. As you know, one of my roles is overseeing the Food Service Department. So we, when we knew that Susan Baroskis was going to retire, we knew there were big shoes to fill. She's been with our district for more than 30 years. And so we, we did a search. We had some great candidates. And Christina, really, her leadership skills and what she brings to this district, from what we've seen, and the leadership that she has shown in the district, and her ability to pull a team together, work for our students, has really been instrumental for the school district. So we're really happy to have her come on board as our new director. We're also very fortunate. As you know, with the Food Service Program, it's self-funded and relies heavily on federal funds, which requires a lot of paperwork, a lot of detail. It's very complicated, and she is familiar with all that. So that was a very, a plus for us as well. So I'm confident in the job that she'll be able to do, and I think that we're very lucky that she's chosen to stay on board with us, so. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I would agree with that, Jane, and endorse that highly. And Christina, your genuine nature speaks to who you are and how dedicated you are to our district, our students and families. And the enthusiasm you bring is, is really intangible, that a lot of people, you know, strive for in their jobs, and many attain through years of service, and you already have that. So that's a sign of a great leader. So thank you for who you are.
Thank you so much.
So not all parents and teachers and other community members will know Christina by her name, but what they will know is that if they came to West Running Brook to get lunch during the pandemic, she was the one pulling together all of her staff to excitedly get people their lunch, and give dogs treats, and make, and make it exciting, sometimes even do karaoke. And just those little things during a really rough time, to me, are the true signs of leadership and the true things that make someone ready to be in a position. So thank you very much, and we're excited for you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Motion to accept the nomination.
And a second? Oh, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you for seeing us. Thank you for bearing with us tonight.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Congrats. Okay, we have other nominations this evening. As I've gone through interviews, and I have one more this week. I have one at 8:15 Thursday night, after our Pinkerton meeting, actually. So that will go on the next nomination sheet. That's the, I guess, the value of Zoom, is being able to interview at that time, after another meeting. So I'm excited about that one, too. I have Shannon O'Hara, Grade 1 Teacher, South Range Elementary School. I nominate Jolene Johnson, Title 1 Reading Specialist, Cornell Elementary School. And Isis Santiago, Special Education Teacher for Project- and the leadership that she has shown in the district and her ability to pull a team together, work for our students, has really been instrumental for the school district. So we're really happy to have her come on board as our new director. We're also very fortunate. As you know, with the Food Service Program, it's self-funded and relies heavily on federal funds, which requires a lot of paperwork, a lot of detail. It's very complicated and she is familiar with all that. So that was a very, a plus for us as well. So I'm confident in the job that she'll be able to do. And I think that we're very lucky that she's chosen to stay on board with us, so. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I would agree with that, Jane, endorse that highly. And Christina, your genuine nature speaks to who you are and how dedicated you are to our district, our students and families. And the enthusiasm you bring is really intangible that a lot of people, you know, strive for in their jobs and many attain through years of service. And you already have that. So that's a sign of a great leader. So thank you for who you are.
Thank you so much.
So not all parents and teachers and other community members will know Christina by her name. But what they will know is that if they came to West Running Brook to get lunch during the pandemic, she was the one pulling together all of her staff to excitedly get people their lunch and give dogs treats and make, and make it exciting, sometimes even do karaoke. And just those little things during a really rough time, to me, are the true signs of leadership and the true things that make someone ready to be in a position. So thank you very much and we're excited for you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Motion to accept the nomination.
And a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you for seeing us. Thank you for bearing with us tonight.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Congrats. Okay. We have other nominations this evening. As I've gone through interviews and I have one more this week. I have one at 8:15 Thursday night after our Pinkerton meeting, actually. That will go on the next nomination sheet. That's the, I guess, the value of Zoom is being able to interview at that time after another meeting. So I'm excited about that one, too. I have Shannon O'Hara, Grade One Teacher, South Range Elementary School. I nominate Jolene Johnson, Title I Reading Specialist, Cornell Elementary School. And Isis Santiago, Special Education Teacher for Project Me at East Dairy Elementary School.
And do we have a motion for those nominations? And a second? All in favor? And opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
So the next item on our agenda is a School Guidance Counselor presentation. I invite Jen Ayotte and Megan Murtagh to the table.
And before Dr. Garofalo takes over, because I know I won't get anything back after you take over. I want to thank Megan and Jen for being here and being the team leaders for counseling department that you are. We appreciate all the time and effort you put in, not only in your regular jobs, but also as team leaders and all the effort and ton you put in to this presentation. So thank you for being here tonight. And Austin, it is yours.
Okay. Chris Kellin, we want to thank Chris Kellin, who worked with our counseling team leaders on this presentation. And Jen at the middle school level and Megan at the elementary level, although they are co-team leaders and they lead the entire counseling department and do a fantastic job with that. We really appreciate the extra time that you guys put in. And of course, this is an example of that, being here on a Tuesday night. But I've been through the presentation that you guys put together and it's very informative. And without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to you folks. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Austin.
So tonight, we're going to be talking about the impact that the pandemic has had on the school counseling department. So the mission of the Dairy Cooperative School District School Counseling Program is to provide a comprehensive guidance program to all students that will promote readiness and motivation to learn, cultivate respect for self and others, promote academic, career, and social success. We strive to support students as they grow and develop to be effective and productive community members and lifelong learners. We do this through the comprehensive guidance model. So as school counselors, we support students' social, social, emotional, academic, and career success. So one of our main parts is supporting their academic success by giving them tools and strategies to use in the classroom. Sometimes this might be making sure a student has breakfast before they start their day to, if they're nervous, how they can get through, you know, that assignment or that test and just helping them, you know, have those tools to really get through their academics of the day. A lot of our day is spent with social, emotional learning. All counselors go into the classrooms and we provide guidance lessons. We do individual lessons and group lessons. So we use what's called the Second Step Curriculum. And this year, we've started using the Choose Love Curriculum. We work on things such as social skills, a lot of empathy in building those connections, bullying prevention, problem solving, coping skills are just a couple of the things we work on in the classrooms individually and as a group. And we also collaborate. We are big on working with all of the families of our students, the staff, and the community, the community agencies such as Center for Life Management, Division for Children, Youth, and Families, and local practitioners in the area. So this year especially, we've seen a lot of social, emotional needs. We've seen an increase in the onset of anxiety and depression. I know just at South Range alone, I've seen a lot of separation anxiety. I've had a lot of parents calling about students who don't want to come to school, who are having a difficult time just getting out of the car. So we've seen a huge increase in just that aspect. Building new connections. We've really felt for our new students this year. Working remotely and starting as a remote student has been really difficult for those students, not being able to go meet a new friend. They have them on the computer screen, but as we know, that's hard to make a new connection. And even going back into the building, lunches look a lot different. Residences were different. So they were, you know, having to learn how to make those connections when they weren't sitting right next to one another, face to face. We've seen concerns regarding increased student exposure to potential and harmful situations. Isolation has been huge, I think, for all of us. Even as adults, we know that we haven't been able to be around our friends and our family. So our students were feeling that even more. Substance abuse and financial concerns are another huge thing we've been seeing. Along with mental health, we've noticed that a lot of students have been having a lot more mental health concerns. So Jen, we'll talk about how we've been supporting that.
So all of the things that Megan talked about are things that we are working with our students with even before the pandemic. Those are kind of the issues, a lot of the main issues that we see. But then, of course, a pandemic hit. And as we all know, we had to really pivot and figure out, not, not just us as school counselors, obviously teachers, the rest of our staff, we all got to figure out, how are we going to do, how are we going to serve our students and address their needs, but in different ways? So of course, as counselors, we try to be really positive. That's one of my things with kiddos. But so when life throws you a rainy day, play in the puddles. So like, you know, everybody's freaking out, oh, we have a pandemic, what are we going to do? So we're still going to do our jobs, but how are we going to do it now? So this is kind of an overview of the different models. You know, as, as you know, we had different models. We had Plan A, which was in-person. We have Plan B, hybrid. Plan C, remote. And so there have been different challenges and different things we've done to address those challenges in the various models. So, and I'll go into more of this in detail in the next slides. But in-person, things like P P E and social distancing and cohorts made our jobs have to look a little bit different. Also tools, so when we talk about tools, as counselors, even at the middle school level, we use a lot of manipulatives. I used to always give kids clay to play with to calm them down, things like that. And, you know, I came into this school year and it's like, nothing, you know? So how, you know, what can we do now? Hybrid, still, you know, we've got the P P A, P P E, the social distancing. We have some kids who are in-person, but now we're also doing the synchronous, just like the teachers. When we're doing a guidance lesson or even some of our guidance groups, we're doing them synchronously. So we might have a kid in a group who's not there that day because they're in the hybrid model. They're at home on an A day, but these other kids in their, their group are at school. So we're doing the synchronous as well. So remote kids, the cohorts, presented issues. We're using things like video conferencing and Google Classroom. And then remote, again, I'll go into this in more detail. But in the beginning, we were using some cell phones that the district provided for us to reach out to families. Video recordings, classroom lessons, Google Classroom. And, you know, all of the counselors did things in different ways, but we're still working on the same thing. So some people preferred to use Google Classroom in a certain way. Some people would do recorded lessons. Some people would be live. Just it depended on what that counselor was comfortable with. So in remote, initially, as we all know, we were kind of thrown into this. And we were, we were, you know, in lockdown. We're home and we're like, what are we going to do? How do we do our jobs? People were still trying to figure out the Zoom thing. People were trying to figure out if it was ethical to do counseling via Zoom. So we had to do some research and find out what are people doing? So as I said earlier, you know, we were given cell phones by the district, which was awesome because then we didn't have to call using our home phones because, you know, we do, there is an element of confidentiality. We do have to protect our, you know, our work hours, all of those things. And so we were doing a lot of calling and communicating with the families. In the very beginning, a lot of my job, and I know Megan and I have talked, was really just helping families try to figure this out. How, what are they going to do? Is their kid not working? Why aren't they working? Why are we not seeing this student on the radar? What's happening? Do they need a Chromebook? Is it, is it their internet? Is it some other circumstance? So we were really connecting, using those cell phones to reach out to our families and supporting students' participation in school. Then we started, you know, learning new techniques and doing things like recorded and live lessons with Choose Love. Choose Love is one of the social, emotional programs that we use. Recorded and live, Choose Love lessons, as I said, emotional supports to students and families. So we're not just helping them with academics, but also just helping them through a really difficult time. I had some conversations with parents that, that had to do with, I can't get my kid off the video games. They're on the video games, what do I do? You know, just kind of coaching them really through some of these things. Connecting them to resources. Megan mentioned some of the resources that we have in the community. We use Google Classroom to provide lessons, resources. We communicated with the students via email, which was this whole new world, and Zoom and Google Classroom. And also working with the parents with the technology because for many of them, this was very new and scary and they didn't know, how do we use Google Classroom? How do we use this Zoom thing? So that was remote. Hybrid, a little different. Now we get to see the kids in person, which was great. But we still, we have things like the P P E. P P E, and I just want to reiterate, the kids have done so well with masks, you guys. They really have done awesome. It's just part of what they do. They're wearing the masks, they're doing it. But, you know, in counseling, a lot of what we do, communication is, you know, nonverbal communication is huge. So now you can only see like from the nose up. And so that does place a little bit of a challenge in person with students. So the social distancing, you know, staying away. I have lunch groups. It's so funny. And we're sitting like, I'm here, somebody's over there where Jane is. We've got somebody, we've got to spread out. So you need bigger spaces in some instances. Connecting with the students is very different. And even the students connecting with one another is different. So they're sitting at lunch and they're separated. And they're, they're, it does create a little bit of a distance. And at first, that was really odd. Definitely, they've gotten quite used to it, but it was, it was different. Counseling synchronously, as I mentioned before. Here we are, we're in-person with some people. We've got some people at home. Just learning how to do that was a challenge, but we did. Supporting, we're still supporting students that are participating in school, both at home and in school, providing the emotional supports to student and families, students and families. We used Google Classroom. So we continued to use a lot of these strategies we were already using remotely to, you know, we're still using Google Classroom even though kids were in the building because some kids were still remote. Some kids were out of the building on different days. And of course, still supporting family access to technology. I will say, like with the cohorts, because when we were remote, we broke down the cohorts even further. So as I said before, I might have a counseling group where, you know, two kids are home on this day, but the other kids are in-person. So we had to kind of like juggle and figure out, okay, well, I guess we're just going to have to have them, you know, on the Zoom while we do our, our group. And then, so of course, the in-person return. Still, you know, the P P E impact, a lot of the same things with hybrid. The social distancing, connecting, social distancing and the student connections, counselor connections, doing the synchronous still, because we do have a few kids who are still remote. So we're still supporting them, but much fewer. Providing the emotional resources, connecting families to resources and collaborating with our community partners. And, you know, I just want to say what the in-person, kids really have enjoyed in my experience with them, being back in school. They really are. The consistency, being in front of their teachers. It's really, for some of these kids who were struggling remotely and hybrid, hybrid is, you know, they're in, they're out, they're in, they're out, and now they're in. And I think, you know, I have seen some really great things come from that. So I'm going to turn it back over to Megan. As I said, we've seen a lot of positives.
Yes. Even though we've had so many challenges, we've also come across so many positives. Jen talked a lot about the technology. I think even just in school counseling, going in for our lessons, we've incorporated so much more technology into our lessons. Even at the elementary level, we have students now going on and watching different social, emotional videos or having interactive lessons where they can go on and move things and really get their hands on to stuff. Just communicating with students. I now have fifth graders and second graders emailing me just to let me know that they'd like to talk to me or something's going on. So it's that instant communication that they never knew how to use before. So that's been so great. Jen talked about the increased commitment to being in school. Kids want to be in school. I think they have a new appreciation for wanting to be in the building, being able to be around their friends and just getting help from teachers instead of having to email back and forth or hop on Zoom. I think they want to be in the building. Flexibility, I think everyone has learned how to adapt and to be flexible. As counselors, that's one thing we always strive to help our students learn how to do. So I think this pandemic has definitely shown everyone how we need to be flexible through our schedules and just what everyone might be going through. Learning how we've been doing service deliveries through Google Classroom or Zoom. We have so many new creative ways to teach students and really connect with them, which brings me to the connections. I think that's been one of my favorite parts about this pandemic is the connections that we've made with not only our students, but our families. There's been times I hopped on a guidance lesson and I had all of the students in front of me and a little kindergartner had her grandma sitting right next to her. And so Grandma was there interacting with us where we might not ever get to meet Grandma. And other times, kids would bring their pet and show their pet and the whole entire class would say, you know, oh, there's Zoe. Zoe's here today. And everyone knew everything about the family, which we don't really get to see that besides this. So as counselors, it was really great to be able to meet different family members and siblings and really build those connections we might not have been able to have. And just the growth that I think everyone's made and going through all of these challenges has been so huge and so impactful, what we've done. So our presentation will be posted on the district webpage, which is where you can find our resources. We've linked Choose Love, which has been a positive thing that we've added this year, along with Second Step, the ASCA National Model and the role of the school counselor. We'd like to thank all of the school counselors in our district for their hard work and commitment, along with Chris Kellin, who's helped us make this presentation and all of the great animation. And we'll leave up here how you can contact your school counselor. And that's it. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Thanks so much. I, I'd asked for this presentation, so I really appreciate you coming. And it's really nice to see you guys here with us instead of on Zoom, too. I'm like feeling really happy about that.
Yeah.
You're probably not happy about being here tonight, but. So one of the things that I've noticed as well is the connections that have been made and the bonds have been made with families, which I think is really great, beneficial for everybody. But once we go back to whatever normal is going to be, how do you keep those going? Do you have an idea of how to do that or?
That's an awesome question. I mean, I think.
I'm sorry, I needed to put you on the spot.
No. I think once those, I mean, this, from experience and in the middle schools, I mean, it's different in all the different schools. So in our middle school, we loop with our students. So that's something that I really love at Gilbert H. Hood. I start with students in sixth grade and I follow them all the way through till eighth grade. So we inherently build connections with families. And I think it just, it just keeps going. You communicate. Like, I'm not going to, parents now, I had a parent, perfect example. I have, I had a parent of a child who is on quarantine right now because the child was exposed to somebody who had COVID through an outside of school activity. The parent said, hey, can you email my child and just check in on her and see how she's doing? Now, in past times, a parent probably would have never asked me that. And the student probably would not have replied because as Megan said, like email wasn't really, it's funny. We as adults use email all the time. it's funny, we as adults use email all the time. Kids and teens, prior to this, at least middle school age, they weren't really using this tool. So, so I emailed the kid today, and we had a little back and forth via email, and she's like, I'm doing great, but man, I can't wait to get back to school, like, it's just, I'm so bored, you know? So I think that it just naturally happens. Obviously, if we fall off the face of the earth and we don't, you know, reach out to the parents, and we don't continue the conversation, but now we have new things to talk about, you know, with our kids in person. And when we met their dog, Fido, you know, we talked about, oh my gosh, I remember, remember when he was doing blah, blah, blah? So, you know, and I think there are lots of ways that we do that, and of course, now we're in this pandemic, and we used to do, and we will go back to doing more, you know, school, community events, where we're having families come into our schools to do fun things, like, I can talk only from my experience, but Gilbert H. Hood, we miss our faculty follies. We've done it two years virtually, which is really fun to watch. Dave Minkel has done an amazing job with it. It's really fun, but it's not the same as having the families in the school, you know, eating pizza, and the kids cheering and showing their parents how crazy the teachers are. So we do, I think we do a great job in Derry with those school events, and I think it's going to be awesome to have those come back, and certainly that helps. Long answer, I don't know if you have anything else to say.
No, even just adding, I think the technology piece, a lot of, especially in elementary school, the parents would always go on and check the Google Classroom. So I think just having like a counseling Google Classroom, or the counselor being present on their Google Classroom, just knowing that parents can reach out that way too, and communicate that way would also be very helpful.
I think it's made us more accessible.
Yeah.
To families, because we, we've been using technology more, and whether that's Google Classroom, or it's a Zoom, or it's an email, we have become more comfortable with it, even though many were not comfortable, and parents have become more comfortable, many parents have become more comfortable with it as well, because we were forced, crisis brought this opportunity, right, that forced us to use technology more. And so, yeah, and, and you know, teaching parents to navigate Google Classroom, now they know how to do it, now they can check their kids' grades, now they can reach out to the teacher in different ways, so, yeah.
Does anyone else have any questions for Jen and Megan?
I just want to say thank you again, just like with the teachers, who had to learn so many new skills to work and teach in a new way. You counselors have absolutely done the same thing, and in the forefront of the connections that we create with the kids. So thank you so much for all you do, and of course, for all of your counseling colleagues.
Thank you.
Thanks to all of you.
Thanks for this opportunity, guys.
And thanks to all of you for an excellent presentation.
Well, thank you.
Have a good night.
So the next item on our agenda tonight is the RFP for our Facilities Assessment and Educational Plan, and I'm going to let Jane start us off.
Thank you. So as you know, we have, we have talked as a board about working through a facilities assessment, and also an educational plan for the district. And a facility assessment, as you remember, would be a total overview of all of our facilities, including our seven schools, SAU, the warehouse, looking at the mechanics of all the buildings, and having a full report for the district that would analyze everything throughout the buildings, all the HVAC, plumbing, electrical, all encompassing in that report, as well as an educational plan to look at the best way to utilize our space educationally. And we had put out our RFP that we had talked about with the board, and sent out the, sent out the RFP, received six bids on that, and as a facility committee, which there were three board members and both Jeremy and myself on, and worked through those, and are here to present our findings from that process. So I don't know if Erica wants to take over for that?
Oh, I will start, and then I'll let Jessica jump in if she has things to say. So just so everyone knows the full process we went through, after we put out the RFP, and we got the six responses, we decided as a committee on narrowing those six responses to the top three. And for each of those top three, we checked references, and we did Zoom interviews with all three committee members, myself, Jess and Lynn, and Jeremy and Jane. And then we created, then we talked, then we pulled together the references and the interviews, and created a final, a final recommendation for the board. So all of the board members should have received, should have been able to go pick up copies of all six RFPs. And the, we, we decided to recommend La Valley Brensinger as the one that we thought was the best. We thought they were.
So I spent the weekend reading all these plans, and you already have a decision made? Why, why weren't we involved in at least the final three, the board?
We haven't a decision made, we're making a recommendation.
Well, that's a decision.
So the subcommittee was charged with narrowing it down to three, and then, as part of that process to figure out which were the top three, we did full interviews with each of the three, and we also checked references for all of the three. And we, as a committee, are making a recommendation. We're recommending La Valley Brensinger, because they showed us that they had the experience and the ability to create a long-term plan, they had a very good, they had a good fee structure, they had the staff expertise, their references all checked out, and they were able to meet our timelines. We, we feel that after talking to them, and talking to, talking to the other two, the other two that were in the top three, Herriman and Turner, that La Valley could best provide the services we need as a district, starting with a facilities assessment. I, I do have one, I do have, this, this is part of a plan, this is the first step in a plan to decide what our district may or may not need in the future, but before I go on with that, I would like to ask if anyone has any questions about the decision we made and why we made it? Or the recommendation we made and why we made it? Because we would, I, I'd like input, and before that, I'd like, just Jess, do you have anything to say? Since, and then also Lynn, I know you're remote, but Lynn or Jess, I'd like you to pipe in and talk about why we're making the recommendation, recommendation we're making before.
I think after going through the RFPs, I think that the committee saw that there were three that we really liked. I think going through the referral process and the interview process, it was very informative. And as a subcommittee, like the rest of our subcommittees, we were tasked to kind of narrow it down and bring forth what we like. It was pretty clear we were all on the same page going forth, and I think the process went very well. I was happy to see we got six, I was happy that we all were on the same page with narrowing it down to three, and this is what we brought forth.
Lynn, I know you're remote, but do you want to jump in and share your thoughts? Because this is an area of expertise for you.
Yeah, I think that we, through the interview process, you know, and speaking with these groups, I think some encouragement happened with costs, but relative to seeing what all six of the proposals were, and the, and there were some extremes on the, on the cost end, I think that helped narrow it down. When you look at the proposals, they seem to be self-explanatory, so the, the costs alone weren't the issue, but it was certainly something that you could look at and say, well, they're all pretty identical, we don't need to spend $100,000 more on something that, that there's more competitive and more articulated, better articulated programs, and La Valley Brensinger was certainly one of them. And, and I will also say that the descriptions that I saw in the interviews, sometimes you see people right on cue, they know, they just know what you think you're going to need, and that helps expedite the decision, and I think La Valley Brensinger certainly stood out in that regard. We heard some good things from, from some of the others that we worked with or, or looked at, but, but they were, for different reasons, just didn't quite move it for me. So that's why I liked the La Valley Brensinger.
So one of, the reasons that we thought La Valley Brensinger was our recommendation for the board to consider is that, in our interview with them, they were best able to articulate what we needed as a district, and that they could meet those needs. They showed that they had a lot of experience doing facilities assessments, they showed that they had a lot of experience doing marketing campaigns when you determined what changes were needing in your building, or what fixes were needed in your building, that they knew how to help you work through that, to share your information with the community, with staff, with administration, with other interested parties, and get their input so that everyone made a decision together. They also showed that they were able to produce reports in a timely manner, that would provide all the information you needed to make a decision about what your next move would be. And their cost was in line, in addition to all those things, with what we were looking to do. Another thing that was really nice about them is their key contact people are local people that understand our community, and understood the needs of our community and how we communicate. So we felt that they would best be able to meet our needs. Do other, do people have, do people have questions about our recommendation, or what they, or, or a motion they'd like to make about that, Derek?
I, I think you guys did good, good, good work on that. I had narrowed it down myself, just through kind of a informal looking through, and some highlights that I thought were important to two, and eventually I had said my opinion would have been for La Valley as well, without being on the committee or anything else, but just from, from their bona fides. The one thing I'll say, though, is they, they have been very successful. The three nearby towns that use them also used the OPM model in that. So I would, I would be interested in continuing with the idea of using an OPM. I know that their initial proposal had two separate parts to it, and we've, we've kind of done the first part, but I think it'd be worthwhile for us to kind of have that insurance backing us, of having that someone on our side, because, you know, La Valley looks like they get great marks. But again, with the local districts that have been utilized, including Pinkerton that's currently using them, they've used an OPM to handle that part, and provide that go-through or just the protection for the district. And if, you know, we're, we're starting with 114,000 for a fee, proposed fee anyway, and then that, obviously depending on what needs to be done in the future, can, can get way higher than that. It'd be nice to have a firm backing us and offering a little bit of insurance moving forward.
So just to clarify that fee, since we did try to make, we want to make it clear that all, how to compare the different proposals, the, some of the other proposals included an educational assessment at a higher level. In La Valley Brensinger's case, they did offer that, but that was an additional $20,000, so the fee you're talking about would really be $134,000. I just did want to clarify that point, just so you knew, because we wanted to, just so you can compare apples to apples. Jess?
Derek, when you talk about an OPM, are you talking about during the facilities assessment part, or are you talking about after we have the buildings assessed?
I think it, my personal opinion is, we would have had them on board for several months now and handled the RFP process, but I think if, if, moving forward, I would like to see them come on board now, and be there as the point people, and with their expertise of, of coordinating these types of plans, all around the state, Massachusetts federally, I think they should be involved immediately.
I have a question. So I'm assuming Marian and the SAU was involved in this process as well. I guess my question, the first question I would ask is, taking money off of the table and the review process of all six of these RFPs, was there a, an idea of which, which RFP you guys had thought was best, and would have worked with what your educational programming, or ideas of what you guys had seen for 21st Century Learning, and the future of the Derry Cooperative School District? Was there a, a consensus from the SAU administration that said, taking money off the table? This is what we see as the most comprehensive plan, and the one that we think is the best for the, the children and the taxpayers of the Cooperative School District?
I was not in the interview process, so I cannot speak to the interviews themselves. I was doing other business while we kind of, you know, divided and conquered, for lack of a better term. So I was not in the interview process about that criteria, nor did I do the reference checks. Jane, I don't know if you or Jeremy want to be able to, or able to speak to that qualification? I did read them, however.
We, we were both involved in the interview process with all three bidders, and one of my references was the Salem School District, and they're currently using them. And, and they've been involved in all four phases of their elementary and high school major renovations. And the education, they actually had originally hired a different company to do the assessment, and La Valley to do the educational plan. So they were really happy with the educational plan, they made, they met with members of the school district, staff, community members, had a lot of forums, they're on site every day. They, they were highly recommended from, I talked to the Assistant Superintendent of Business Administration there, who works directly with them. And so I was pretty confident with the recommendation that came for them, and, and having gone through all six of the bids myself, I thought that they were, they were my top pick, educationally, financially, and facilities.
So John, just so you know, the, there were, when, we had a matrix, a decision matrix, and there were six different things each of the RFPs was scored on. They were scored on their staff expertise, to be able to assess the project, the reference checks that Jane just alluded to, the ability to meet our work timeline, their experience with similar projects, meaning other projects in New Hampshire, other schools, similar, also doing master plans, their ability to complete a long-term plan, because that's a different kind of project than some, some other, some other people would do, and their fee structure. So the fee structure was one of six things, and all of those were brought together to be considered. It was not, it was not a decision based on costs, it was a decision based on, a suggestion of a decision from our part, based on multiple considerations. Just so you know, there weren't, there were multiple things that, and those, all those things were the same things that were laid out in the RFP that was brought here for approval. Those were the things that we put out in the RFP and asked that they, that they show us.
Okay. Yeah, the, I guess, the way I, when I had reviewed it this weekend and into today is, I'd broken it down really into three categories, a great, a good, and a not-so-good. And I actually had, I actually had MGT and Marinese at the top, and this was taking price out of it. I just think that they had the most comprehensive plans. I think MGT, actually, I took the most notes on them. They have, they've been master planning since 1988, they're, they have an Education Solutions Group, they're an international company that has comprehensive approach on facility assessments, demographics, utilization, community engagement, budget. I did, one, a couple of cons, I guess, for them were, they do have a ton of experience, not so much locally. I knew, I do know that they were, they, they are in the progress of doing the Manchester Facilities Master Planning, and I do think that some of the stuff that's in there as far as demographics and program and educational resources is somewhat duplicative in, in its work. But the things that they have as far as former educators, site assessment scorecards, formula for what works, budgeting estimate process, educational capacity analysis, roles of key personnel, the references as far as redistricting analysis, school district, the long-range planning of the Ferguson-Florissant School District, and the facilities master plan of Lyon County. I think they should have been interviewed as one of those top three. I think Turner was one of those not-so-great. I think their RFP was underwhelming, I think that their cost structure was out of line. So I think, I think it's kind of a miss there, because I would have loved to see them. The only downside with Marinese is obviously their fee structure, but if we're talking about being a Dairy Cooperative School District, and being involved in the community, as, they've been involved in Hood, West Running Brook, all, I mean, they've done a ton. So they provided references upfront, glowing references and letters, we didn't have to call for them, wouldn't have taken that much, so, I mean, those are the two that I had at the top. I, I am pretty frustrated that this is not a discussion, this is more of just a, hey, here's a recommendation for the, the rest of the four of us. But those are really my thoughts on everything here. Like, if, I mean, if I had a vote, I would say MGT would be probably number one, just because everything that I noted, and their fee structure is not outlandish, it's kind of right in line with what La Valley, sorry, La Valley Brensinger had as well, so, those are just my thoughts.
So I will say, for, as a committee at least, and it's not that a decision has been made, this is a discussion, and I want it to be a discussion, for us as a committee at least, MGT, the big downside was it was not local, and even their kickoff meeting was going to be virtual, and we felt like for such a big project, at least we personally, that there should be someone local that really is on. that there should be someone local that really is on the ground and understands locally what's going on. That was at least our personal, where we fell on that one. Their, their, their key person that they put as a contact was based in Florida.
I just, I'd like to add to Mr. Dugan's point, you know, we have to, you know, without getting into specifics, but we have work history with some of those that you have expressed some admiration for. And I, I can say sometimes the work history hasn't been very satisfactory face-to-face, in my own point of view. So, and I can understand where some of those points are made. I, I just, I can tell you that this board as a whole made a decision to avoid a proposal from a third-party OPM. One of the concerns on it was not just the timeline, but it was the cost, and then the redundancy of starting over again in the fall after receiving that cost. I think the majority of the board as a whole kind of voted to accelerate that process and get to where we're at now. So I, you know, it's not without being totally dismissive to Mr. Dugan. I just, just want to address some of his thoughts and know that there was some deeper positions taken beyond what was just read there.
Could I, Paul, could I ask you what your thoughts are? We haven't heard from you yet. And I do want to make sure that everyone on the board shares their thoughts as we go through this process.
Just two things. Two things. I have to concur with, with John about, first of all, Turner. I was, what was the term he used, underwhelmed by them. And so they, they were easy to eliminate. And that's not to bash somebody, but it's just that the fact of the matter is that, that was, that was my thought on, on that. What the, the, La Valley was, because it was involved so intimately with surrounding districts, it prompted me to make a couple of fast phone calls to some people who are friends of mine who serve on, two people who serve on districts, neighbor in Derry. And they were very effusive in their, their statements that said that they could very easily work with them, and they were amendable to changes along the way. So that was a very positive thing, because I think that we've got to be able to, to not have something that's cast in stone, and it's going to be, you know, dam the torpedoes and, and full speed ahead if we see things that we run into. So those two particular districts that both of which navened, our district, had used them extensively, and they, members, both of whom I know very well, were very satisfied with that. So that was the, the, the over and under, the up and the bottom and the top for me. And I, I think that, you know, we've got to think about, to some extent, well, not to some extent, to a great extent, we've got to think about what we're paying. And if we, we can't totally discount the fact that we should be getting the best bang for the buck, so to speak. And I appreciate the fact that that was one of the considerations that was made. It's not like money is no object either, providing we're getting what we want. So those are my, my thoughts on, on the process.
So I'm gonna suggest at this point with everyone's thoughts on the table, I'm just gonna pass out a one-page sheet. I want to, one of the things I think is really important when we make such a decision is that no decision is made in a vacuum. No decision we make in this school district is made in a vacuum. We need to make a decision on what's best for the district, based on where we're at now, where we could possibly go, and where, what, what is needed. So I just want to share, share this with everyone, and I will pass. It's on the screen, but I apparently, I apologize for making it quite small. Do you have enough, Derek? So the reason I want to talk about this first is because I want to address it in the overall picture, and I also want to address Derek's question about the OPM as part of this discussion. So what you see in front of you is us as a committee, as the, the facilities cup committee, stepping back and saying, any project we do is never in a vacuum. There's always a plan, and while we have no idea where we're lead, right now where we're standing is where we're saying, we need to know the state of our facilities, what they can handle now, and what changes may be needed in the future to handle both from a facilities perspective and an educational perspective, the best needs of our students. So that's step one, where we're at now, doing a facility study, educational study, and master plan for seven buildings. We're looking at different consultants that can do that. The consultants have laid out for us that the facilities assessment will take place, the data gathering part will take place during the summer. And in the fall and into the winter, they'll be working to pull together that data and then pull together an education plan and a facilities plan, the master plan, which they all discussed as interviewing staff, interviewing students, interviewing community members, and also, in some cases, bringing on a play, an outfit called NuVista that helps with higher, bigger visioning, where they work with the administration and says, this is your current education plan and your current, what you're providing. But if you want to think big, what could you do even better? And how could a building help you do that? And those were the things that were asked, that we asked in the RFP that they could do. And then at the same time, which is step 1A, we've hired Davis Demographics, and we've asked them to update, update their data. Since we know that a lot's changed with COVID, we want to make sure they're using those October 1 enrollment numbers. But there's a lot of work even before that, just to pull together housing data and other data, so that that data can go into any plan, so we know what our demographics are for whatever our building's needs are and whatever, whatever we may be seeing. And then the rest of the things you see on this sheet are really the unknowns, because we don't know what we'll get from a facility study. We know that we'll get a facility study that says, here's the assessment of our buildings, and here's how they are, and here's what you need. We don't know what will be said. If, if what's said causes the need to do something, that's where we get to the feasibility study aspect, where there'd be a study of, we need to reorganize, we need to close, we need a new building, we need an addition, and this is because of education, planning, space, whatever it is. And in my opinion, that's where it really would be beneficial to potentially bring on something like an OPM, because that's a lot of organization and planning to get all that stuff done. And that's not something we have the capacity or the experience in terms of management with. Whereas this initial stuff, the facility study, looking at each of the buildings, is something Jeremy can work with them to lead through. If the feasibility study acts, actually leads to something that we want to do, and that's an if, if needed, we would then choose some sort of plan, and then we would need to gather information from administrators, teachers, the public. We would have to share a lot of information, have a lot of public meetings, so everyone has input. And then that would eventually lead to executing a plan and taking a vote. So I'm talking, I am saying, nothing beyond 1A is certain. But you can't have any plan without being able to see down a path of determining your needs and where those needs could go. And I stress could emphatically. So I just wanted people to see that, as a school board, as a district, we need to think about our current needs and our future needs, and take steps to make sure we're meet, we're meeting students' needs. And I think the first step is this facility study. So I would recommend choosing, choosing one of the consultants, and our committee recommended La Valley for a study. I personally do not think we need an OPM at the facility study phase. Jeremy has said he can, he can handle that aspect, but I would be open to the discussion of that at a later phase when there is more, when there is more deep planning going on. But I will stop there. I just wanted to put things in perspective, because I think perspective matters. Do any people have thoughts or comments, or members of the committee want to add to anything I said? Lynn?
No, I'm just waiting to see if anybody else has, has any other thoughts.
Okay. It's just harder when you're remote to know. Not to put you on the spot, but Jessica, since you've been intimately involved in this?
I feel confident with the recommendation that we made. I understand that people feel like they either didn't have enough information going in this, or feel, you know, to respect John's thing, that he would have made different decisions. I feel as a school board, we have subcommittees, and this was one of the ones that we were tasked to do. We, just like any of the other subcommittees we serve on, we take all the nitty-gritty, we take all the information, we bring it to the rest of the board, and this is where we discuss it and vote. And I think that our subcommittee did a lot of due diligence on this, and I, I also recommend La Valley.
I'm gonna disagree. A sub, a school board committee does not make $100,000 decisions for the district. I believed that you would vet out the RFPs, bring back your three top, and we would all look at them, have interviews with them, and discuss them, as has been done in the past in this district. I'm really disappointed in this process. I, I have been supportive of this. I have said we need help with what we're doing in this district, because we were going nowhere. But this process is very disappointing.
I think I'm, I'm comfortable with the process. I think in, there are bigger construction projects that we've done than $130,000, and it's usually either the Director of Facilities or Jane who handles that and brings us a recommendation. I think in this case, it was good to get the board involved at this level. I think it was fine that the committee did what they did to narrow that down, along with our experts that work for us, giving their opinions. So I, I'm fine with that. And I'm, and I'm even happier that I concurred with that, that estimate. So, no, I'm, I'm more than welcome to make a motion to accept the La Valley RFP for our master plan.
Second.
Should we have a, do we want to have any discussion before we vote? And I'm gonna do a roll call vote, just because I want everything to be on the record. Would anyone else like to say anything before we have a vote? Either in person or remote? Given that's the case, I'm going to call a roll call vote. Derek?
Yes.
And can we just, we specify that you are, can you just specify your motion, just to make sure we have it right?
Yeah, so it'd be motion to accept the proposal from La Valley-Brenzinger Architects for the master plan.
It's for the facility study, educational study, and master plan.
Okay. Okay, so motion to accept the proposal from La Valley-Brenzinger for facility study, educational study, and master plan.
Thank you. So I'm gonna take a roll call vote. Derek?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
John?
No.
Brenda?
I'm also voting no.
Lynn?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so the motion passes.
I'd like to say why I voted no. I voted no because of the process. It has nothing to do with the fact that we need this done, but I do not believe a committee of the school board has the right to make this decision without everybody else for this amount of money.
Anyone else like to, John, would you like to say anything?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I just think that the top three candidates could have been readjusted. I think, like I said, MGT should have been, deserved to, to be in there. And I think if they had given, been given a chance for an interview, I think that might have been an opportunity to have a, a different, better option.
Close the discussion of the RFP for now. We will obviously continue this discussion, because once we, once we will engage with them, there will be a lot more going on. And we will, of course, want, Jeremy will be sure to keep us up to date on what's been happening. And I do want to thank both the members of the subcommittee, as well as Jane and Jeremy. It was a ton of work to pull together all this stuff and do interview and reference checks. It was a lot of subcommittee meetings to make sure that we had done our due diligence. So I just want to thank everyone for their work, for the better of the district. And with that, I will move on to Jane, who, oh, sorry, to Jeremy, who will talk about the water project for Grinnell and East Derry.
So the only update I have for you this week is that the ESER funding is, we are not eligible for the ESER funding for the water projects. So our next step is, I met with Public Works, and we're going to try and get on with their town bid for the water work that they're doing. Their bids are due June 17th, so we're not gonna have any new information until after that. We're gonna try and get on with their contracts as change orders. So, like I said, I'm not gonna have any more info until middle of June. That's where that stands.
Jeremy, did, did they give us any indication of why those didn't qualify for ESER funds? I'm just curious.
Yes, because it has to be COVID-related. And we tried 10 different ways, and still a no-go.
Thank you for trying.
We had to write a bunch of letters, and it went back and forth. Then we had some meetings. And like I think I said at the last meeting, it's like they go to the man behind the curtain and come back and tell you yes or no. But unfortunately, and, and, you know, it's the right thing to try and get it, but it kind of pushed us out a little bit. So we'll be playing catch-up.
So does pushing this out mean we'll have to do other things in terms of the water in order to make sure we're keeping up with whatever standards? I don't know if East Derry has any programs going on in the summer.
Uh, we have to anyways. We keep up with it. But we're at the mercy of Public Works, who is doing us a favor. So, you know, they've got a bunch of projects that they're concentrate on, concentrating on. So, you know, and they're willing to help us, but they've already got the ball rolling on the stuff that they're doing. So it's just a waiting game. It'll get done. I just not sure when at this point.
And so for Grinnell, we're continuing to, the town continues to flush the lines when necessary. And, and for East Derry, you're going to continue, what is it, quarterly? You're gonna continue to get those notifications. But at this point, the water is still safe. At both locations, the water is safe to drink. It is not harmful to anybody. So you will continue to get those. And we did talk to the state, and as long as we have a plan for what we're doing, which Jeremy's been working with the state, I'm working with the town water department and Mark LaRue over at the town, then we're in compliance. So we are moving the project forward as fast as we possible, as fast as we possibly can. And so as soon as, as soon as we know when that can start, we'll, we'll bring it forward to you. But you're, we're still good in the, in the schools. So nothing more that needs to be done at this point.
Does anyone have any other questions about the water projects?
I just had a question. I know you said that it would either be delayed more because of the ESER funds possibility. Does this mean that it will get done quicker, or that it will be done the same as what we thought it was gonna be?
Yeah, it, it will definitely be done quicker, now that we don't have the ESER funding. But because, you know, this past two months of trying to do this, rather than it be done, you know, being done August 31st, maybe we're looking at October. And I'm speaking for other people. So that could- And I'm speaking for other people, so that could change, but that's my hope.
All right, thank you.
If no one has any more questions about the water, I will move on to Student Services Early Childhood Education Program Coordinator and turn it over to Mary Ann.
Okay, good evening. Thank you, Jane and Jeremy, for all the work on the water projects that we continue to discuss. So thank you. Student Services Early Childhood Education Program Coordinator. I brought this to the public session tonight, because as you can see in attachment D, there is a job description that Jane Boyle will soon speak to, titled Early Childhood Education Program Coordinator. And what this does by bringing it to the board, it was not a position in the budget. So what we're trying to do is shift resources around within our Student Services Department, thereby explaining that right now, one of our assistant directors is splitting their duties in multiple ways. One of those duties is to oversee the Derry Early Education Program. So we think it's best, as a leadership team, to shift that duty into completely an Assistant Director of Student Services, thereby leaving a gap at DEEP. So that is why I'm proposing this evening that the board, you know, hopefully take a serious look at adding an Early Childhood Education Program Coordinator. And who better to speak to that role than our expert in DEEP for many years, our Director of Student Services, Jane Boyle?
Hi. Behind the mask, you can always, I'm always smiling when I talk about the Derry Early Education Program. It's one of my babies. I can tell you the size of the program has grown over the years, and it's a tribute to all the employees, all the teachers there, the staff there, and the families. It's a wonderful program, but it really has grown. And I know we call it a program, but it's like a little school. The operations of that, that program is a school. It's just like every other principal has to do to run and make sure all the students are safe, they're getting in and out of school safely. They have to still do newsletters, report cards, take care of the everyday operations that any other principal and school admin does. The, we really feel that having a coordinator there is gonna bring more curriculum expertise to the building, to help support the staff and the students. There's gonna be hands-on activities where the coordinator will be able to go right in the classrooms and help support the assistants, for example, that are helping to work with students in the program. The other thing I think we have to remember as a district is, this is the first time families are being introduced into the Derry Cooperative School District. I can tell you for myself, for years, when the program first started, I was there full-time as one of the assistant directors. And we had, I believe, four assistant directors at the time, and now we're down to two. My main job was running that program. You spend so much time with parents, the trust, the rapport, getting parents to feel comfortable dropping their little preschooler off at school, and knowing that that preschooler is happy, comes home excited about being around their friends, and they're learning the social skills and getting used to being in school. Also, the coordinator will have the responsibility of doing all the supervision and all the evaluations there, which is an important responsibility of any school to be able to do that, along with reading all the report cards and making sure that communication is being delivered to parents, just like this year with COVID. How many, how many letters had to go out to make sure that parents knew what was happening? So this position, I believe, is essential for the growth of this district. And as obviously I'm moving on, I want to make sure that I'm handing it off to someone that is gonna continue to grow this program, and to have the children grow and move on to kindergarten and move up the grades. And I'll put a little plug for any parent out there that's looking for a preschool program. Please call the preschool. We actually have some nice enrollment right now. But this coordinator would start five days before school and five days after school ends, so will help with the transition before school begins, when it ends. We're all asking, we're also thinking or putting our job description that the, the person has experience working with preschool and really understands the special ed portion of it, which is so important, and the, the growth of just an early childhood program. So I'm excited to think that we can move forward with this, and certainly will do my best to support it and work with whoever we get in this program to continue to build the program. And so I hope you move forward with it.
Jane, will you just talk a little bit about what DEEP is? I think we have a lot of new families that moved into Derry that may not know what DEEP is.
Sure.
So I think people would, it would benefit people to know what it is.
DEEP is a preschool program for pre-K3 students, when they're three or they're four years old. Once they move out of fours, we go to our full-time kindergarten now, which we used to have our PK5 students there. So our preschool three students comes two times a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays, and our three-year, that's our three-year-old program. It's either in the morning or it's in the afternoon. Our four-year-old program runs three days a week, on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. It runs in the morning and it runs in the afternoon. The beauty of our program also is we take care of our special ed students that need services when they turn three, if they end up having what's called an individual education plan. And I can go back years ago to tell you that we used to have our program and our identified students go to community preschools, who we worked with wonderfully, I will say, at the time. But they were in like fifteen different places, and we weren't doing the curriculum that we really want to support with what's going on in our district. And we found it pretty difficult at that time to really meet the needs, because we would have to do whatever was going on in that preschool. So now we have the opportunity to develop our programs that start at preschool, and the curriculum runs through to go to kindergarten and go to the upper grades. So we really work well with our literacy coordinator and our math coordinator. We've kind of bridged some of the curriculum we're doing now for our preschoolers. So it's such an easy transition for parents when they're moving on from our preschool program and then going to kindergarten, to the elementary schools. So I hope that answered your questions. But anyone that's out there that has any questions about preschool, just give me a call over at the SAU office. I'm more than happy to talk to you about it. It's a wonderful program.
I just want to make sure that people know that the typical students, there's a tuition fee for them.
Oh, yes, oh, I forgot that part. Yes, there is a tuition part. It's a hundred and seventy dollars a month for our PK3 and two hundred and ten dollars a month for our PK4s. I always forget the money part of it, right?
Just to clarify, though, that tuition is for regular ed students?
Yes, if you do have an IEP and you do have a disability, then it, we, we, we have to, as a district, we have to provide services for students with IEPs once they turn three.
And just to clarify, thank you, Jane. That's why I left it to you. So just to clarify, this is proposed as a school year position with five days before and five days after. It would make our assistant directors whole, the two assistant directors whole, thus really improving services to all students, as our Student Services Department does direct services to all students, you know, particularly to those students who are identified. But in essence, everybody is helped in our district.
Mary Ann, could you talk briefly about how this is part of, I don't know if you want to address it, the reorganization that there's, positions are being, there will be different positions next year?
I can, right now. We are right now searching for a Director of Student Services. You know, Jane is certainly leaving us in retirement. We won't talk about that yet. So what we're doing is, was, we're reallocating our resources, right? And that's what I call it right now, we're reshifting, and we're reallocating resources. So since this position was not budgeted for, I wanted to make sure that this came to you as a board, and we, as a leadership team, wanted to make sure that this came to you as a board. And we thought long and hard about how to at least make our two assistant directors whole for the unknown quantity and that unknown person, and that unknown hire of a Director of Student Services. So that is, you know, our intention at this time. And we can't certainly even advertise this position without the board's approval. Does that answer your question? Okay.
I actually had two questions. How many teachers do we have in the DEEP program now?
Right now, we have four teachers.
Four teachers, okay. The other question, probably from Mary Ann, is that is this an additional position? Are we just reallocating responsibilities and making one, excuse me, making one dedicated specifically to this mission, or is it?
In essence, it is an additional position that it's not, this position's not budgeted for.
Yeah.
So we're doing, Paul, and that's a really good question, is we're looking at the way our Student Services Department is organized now, and reallocating those resources as they are now. Yet this position was, is not in existence now.
Right.
So in order to say when we reallocate, or as we are now reallocating resources, because this position is not there, I, you cannot, in good conscience, I cannot, in good conscience, none of us can put this out, you know, on our website and say, okay, we can't advertise this without bringing this across to the board and saying, do you approve or do you disapprove of this, even in that reallocation of our current resources?
And it's conceivable entirely that one of the people that's serving in one of those capacities right now could be, if providing they were interested in the position, they could be moved up into that position.
I guess it's all, it would, it would be up, open to anyone.
It would be open internally.
Who's qualified, who meets the qualifications?
Right, okay, okay, thank you.
Yes.
I had a question for Jane. Did I hear you correctly say that there used to be more assistant directors of the program, or did I?
No, there used to be more assistant directors in the district.
In the district, okay, sorry, I.
There was only one, there was one, only one director over at DEEP at the time when it first started, and that was me.
Thank you.
Mary Ann, is it accurate to say that you're not going to be hiring a replacement assistant superintendent, and that some of those resources would be allocated then to this program?
That's in the reallocation of resources plan, that is correct.
Thank you.
Yet in the reallocation of resources, because any position that's not budgeted for, we still have to bring to the board and ask for approval for you, from you, even though that money may be there in, in an aggregate form, it would still not be right to do this, so, yes.
Does anyone else have any more?
I just want to remind people that DEEP, the way it's, the way it's set up for our special needs three-year-olds, once they turn three, they can enter into DEEP. So it changed, DEEP, I was gonna say tuition, that's not what I meant. Student enrollment changes constantly. There's an ebb and flow of students that, you know, not, not leaving, but coming in, because they turn three and they can immediately enroll and get services, which is the way it should be. So it's never, it's always growing. And, you know, if you recall several years back, when, several, probably five or more, when DEEP was at Grinnell, they were bursting at the seams, because there were so many students. We, not we, Jane and Chris, tried to balance that as best they could, along with the Grinnell staff, and that's how they ended up over at Hood. It's a great program, and it serves the needs of our children. And I think, you know, I like this idea, actually, so I'll actually make a motion to approve the Early Childhood Education Program Coordinator.
Second.
Is there any discussion before we vote? In that case, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jane, you got it.
Now we will turn to Mr. Farley, who's been very patiently waiting his turn.
So at Pinkerton, the number of COVID cases, first of all, has been down significantly in line with the rest of the district and everywhere, I guess, to just a handful each week, under ten, well under ten each week, which is a huge contrast to this winter and even earlier this spring. In line with that, Pinkerton held a vaccine clinic, a free vaccine clinic, for any student who wanted a Pfizer vaccine, and also any sibling of a Pinkerton student aged 12 to 18 after the vaccine was approved for them as well. So that was, held a couple days back, and the second dose will be administered to everyone who got it in a few weeks. And also, Pinkerton held a successful virtual induction ceremony for the National Foreign Language Honor Society, and a safe outdoor in-person event for the full National Honor Society induction that was conducted on the football field, and it was a great in-person community event that actually could happen. There have also been, with the school year wrapping up, a number of club competitions, students in HOSA, which is the Health Occupation Students of America, DECA, which is a business and marketing-related club, and a whole bunch of other organizations. I know there was a culinary club, I think, who won a bunch of awards at competitions across the state recently and brought those to Pinkerton. And finally, this week is senior exam week, after which all of our seniors will be leaving us for the year. And a, and an in-person outdoor graduation is scheduled for June 7th on the Memorial Field at Pinkerton, hopefully held safely, obviously, but it'll be great to do that in person as well. And then also, finally, the student liaison election for next year is being held right now, so there are two candidates going for that. So hopefully, at the next meeting, I will be able to update you on who your next Pinkerton liaison will be.
Thank you, in front of the great update.
I would just like to, before we move on from Mr. Farley, just thank Pinkerton for holding that clinic. I know I took my own son there, and I heard from a lot of parents who found it really helpful to be able to go there, as opposed to having to look around the state. So I think the organization and the collaboration of various people who made that happen, and I don't know all of those people, was resulted in something that was really an ease for parents. So I think that was a great, a great thing.
You'll find out the collaborators in the first section of my superintendent's report. That'll be the third time you guys hear about it tonight.
So with that.
They should miss the first two.
So with that, before I usurp anything else, I'm gonna pass it back to Mary Ann for policy.
And Dr. Garofalo, you take the floor.
Okay, I have a couple of policies that are first readings that we just discussed in a recent subcommittee, policy committee, subcommittee meeting. Exceptions to use of specific course materials, policy IGE, and promotion and retention, policy IKE. We've got some updates from the New Hampshire School Boards Association, and these have been vetted through our lawyer. I do want to mention to Brenda, we did check on that opt-out, and it is an opt-out for exceptions to use of specific course materials. So that's why we're moving that forward. And does anybody have questions on either exceptions to use of specific course materials, policy IGE, or promotion and retention? policy IGE, or promotion and retention, policy IKE?
Any questions? You can go on, Austin, we'll vote for them, we'll vote, we'll, if we have to take any motions, we'll take them as a block.
Okay, then I'll turn it back over to Mary Ann.
Thank you, Austin, that was quick. All right, and I have the third of the policies, policy JCA, Change of School Assignment, Best Interest in Manifest Educational Hardship. If you note at the bottom, this is revised in May 2021, and this is a merge of the previous policy, JCA and JCE, obviously it's JEC, Manifest Educational Hardship. So I'll first of all go on to JEC. JEC was the former manifest, is a current, actually, Manifest Educational Hardship policy, which established the standards and process for reassignment based on manifest educational hardship. So policy JEC has been withdrawn and merged into policy JCA, which JCA previously only addressed the standards and process for a superintendent to reassign, reassign a student based on a student's best interest. And you've probably heard of both of these factors in conversation, or you've seen it in writing, best interest in manifest educational hardship. So the newer changes to JCA, which is Change of School Assignment, Best Interest, Manifest Educational Hardship, have made the best interest in manifest educational hardship process sequential instead of separate. So that's the bottom-line change to the newest policy, first read, JCA. And so that bottom needs, the bottom notation needs to be corrected, it is JEC. Sorry, I didn't pick that up. I have it in my notes, but I did not pick it up at the bottom here. So those are the basic changes, they're a sequential process instead of two separate processes and two separate policies.
So is these are only first readings, there's no action required, but does anyone have any questions about these? So given that, we will move on to a donation from the Dairy Village Rotary Club.
All right, the Dairy Village Rotary Club has donated a total of 2,050 face masks. If we divide that up, it's 1,650 adult masks and 400 child, children's masks valued at approximately $2,875. So on the behalf of the Dairy Cooperative School District, I ask that the school board accept this generous donation and approve the generous donation. We are extremely grateful to the Dairy Village Rotary Club for their support of our community. And I know that we continue to accept donations, we have a number of them still coming in, and we are very, very grateful for all of the donations from our community and our community members at all times. So thank you again for the donation of face masks valued approximately $2,875.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Our next item is the superintendent's update.
All right, now I'm gonna get on with the clinic. I just need to make a correction to that policy. All right, as has been mentioned, a vaccine clinic was held Saturday, May 22nd at Pinkerton Academy for students aged 12 through 18, which included eligible students from Pinkerton Academy, Next Charter School, Dairy Chester and Hampstead, more than 400 students, we had, we have over 500 registered. I talked to Dr. Powers and we, and he had told me specifically that more than 400 attended and they received the Pfizer vaccine, and these same students received their second dose on Saturday, June 12th at Pinkerton, we call it a closed pod, just as we had vaccination, a closed pod vaccination for our staff. Special thanks to Southern New Hampshire Public Health, Pinkerton Academy, the Dairy Fire Department, and the many volunteers representing all of our school districts and community for their efforts in assisting with the vaccination process. I was able to go over and watch and thank people myself on Saturday, my daughter's graduation from college that weekend, but still I wanted to make sure that I went over. You know, even from our crossing guard to everyone, they're, they're just so gratuitous and so kind, and it was a great culture. Families were with their children and young adults, and it was, it was a really calm atmosphere, I endorse that, the board was calm, and everything went very, very well. So I'll be back on June 12th, a little bit more relaxed that day without a graduation weekend, and so I look forward to that as well, and I hope our families do too.
Mary Ann, can I ask a quick question? Is that 400 total or 400 Dairy students?
400, it would be over 400 total.
Okay.
So I didn't get the exact number, I know we had over 500 originally signed up through our original emails that went out, but the end, and the last count that I received from Dr. Powers was over 400, so, actually showed up. So thank you to our school board members, families and staff who completed the survey that was sent out on Thursday, May 20th, whose purpose was to gather feedback regarding input on what our Dairy School District should prioritize as we continue to prepare, as I've said before, for the 21-22 school year. I know this year hasn't ended, but as you know, we're always in those two or three cycles of preparing for the next year, still focusing on this year and closing out one year, and as Jane always says, kind of preparing for, in three budget cycles and preparing for another year ahead, looking ahead, reflecting on what we currently do and looking ahead. The federal government is committed to funding and assisting schools and making up for the impact of COVID-19 pandemic, in conjunction with other stakeholders. We'll use the input that we received to determine priority areas. We're certainly grateful for the feedback and time that our stakeholders provided. Throughout the last 10 days, there's been a great investment of time by members of our leadership team to complete the S R 3 fund paperwork. It's very, very comprehensive. I've not only met with our direct members of our leadership team, we've also met with some superintendents and South Central superintendents particularly, and everyone's funding, certainly that the, that the time limit is waning, so the paperwork is actually due June 1st. Our goal as a district is to have that completed by Thursday, and we will have it done, so you can be assured. I've already said that, and Jane Samard will address this paperwork and the rationale behind the S R 3 paperwork in more detail in her report, so I won't get into a lot of that. In the meantime, in kind of a simultaneous nature, we are also preparing for the reopening plan, to which I referred earlier, the 21-22 reopening plan, which is due on the heels of the S R 3 paperwork, that's due June 23rd. And I addressed that in the beginning to reinforce that, you know, that's, that's an ever-changing goal. We may put something in the reopening plan that says, you know, we are committed at this time to doing X with students and staff, and then that commitment changes. And so we have to have that flexible nature in our plan, we have to make sure that's flexible. Today, we received another template from the DOE that has to be submitted as part of the reopening plan. So that's something else that we need to submit, but we do have a little more time to do that. So I just definitely want to keep you apprised of what's going on in the, in our world of the Department of Education. But we are moving forward and we'll have those deadlines meet, met ahead of time. Hiring for staff is ongoing, as you could see tonight, and we will continue. I'm enjoying interviewing finalists for the open positions. As I said, I have one at 8:15 Thursday, and Zoom, you know, certainly facilitates that process, although I really enjoy, I really miss and look forward to getting back to the face-to-face interviews. I think those are really advantageous, too. At this time, however, we have many open positions. If you bear with me, I will announce those open positions and invite any of you and all of you out there to apply for the following positions. Elementary school special education teacher, special education facilitator, speech and language mythologist, elementary school nurse, school psychologist, of which we have two. Middle school library assistant, reading assistant, special education assistant, food service employee, substitute teacher and assistants, custodian, and now an early childhood coordinator. So, early childhood, early childhood special education coordinator, so I think I got that right. So that will be posted tomorrow morning. So I encourage all of you to apply, tell your friends that, you know, certainly we think Dairy School District is a great place to work, and if you're committed to students in any way, shape or form, this is the place for you. So we hope to see your application coming in soon. We have 211 kindergarten students who are currently registered, and this is an increase of nine students since my last report. We continue to monitor enrollment very carefully for the 21-22 school year, in particular, grade five at Ernest P. Barker, and the kindergarten and grade four at South Range Elementary School are two, are three sections of which we're currently monitoring very, very closely. We monitor that in a comprehensive sense, but those three sections, again, grade five at Ernest P. Barker, kindergarten and grade four at South Range are being very, very closely watched, and that is an active, you know, live document, and, you know, students come in and then some students leave. So we monitor that as a team, both at the local, both at the school level and then at our SAU level, and we work as a team to monitor that on a consistent basis. But I do like to give you updates on that, because right now, actually, at South Range, we have two sections of 26 each at that grade five, at that grade four level, that grade four level. Again, sometimes families, as we know, move out, and they, you know, don't, they haven't, they don't know yet, sometimes that's the, you know, what we don't know, but I wanted to alert you of that. So I encourage families of students who have been homeschooled this year to please call our office at 432-1210 if they intend to re-enroll your students in our K through eight schools for the 21-22 school year. We hope that you do, and we look forward to a wonderful 21-22 school year for all students and a wonderful and smooth end of the current school year as well. Middle school promotions will be held on June 9th and June 10th for both West Running Brook School and Gilbert H. Hood Middle School. The ceremonies will be held in person, again, similar to Pinkerton Academy, except ours will be held inside, and students will be promoted in cohorts at 5:30, 6 o'clock, 6:30, and 7 PM. We're proud of our eighth grade students and wish them all the best as they move on to high school. Dr. Garafalo, and I had the pleasure of attending West Running Brook Middle School's National and Junior Arts Society's induction ceremony via Zoom on Thursday evening, May 20th, I believe. Jonathan, you were there, and your daughter was honored as well, and Brenda, I know you were on, I don't know if, was anyone else on? It was on Zoom, you were, Erica, okay. So it was Zoom, so we kept, I had to flip through like the four pages of Zoom, but congratulations, Jonathan, and your daughter, it was wonderful. Co-advisors, Mrs. Suzanne Carr and Miss Patty Thomas did an exceptional job, I thought, in organizing and really personalizing the event. It was, it was quick, but it was very, very well-run and personalized, and I loved the music at the end, it was a perfect way to end it. Can't say enough about the newer members and also the, I thought the officers did a superb job. So all in all, congratulations to each and every newly, new student who was inducted, the new inductees, and again, the current officers who just obviously were superb, and again, Suzanne and Patty deserve a lot of credit, so that was, it was fun. I still look forward to the in-person, but it was, it was really good at the way it was done, so congratulations and thank you for the invite. At our next school board meeting on June 8th, we'll be honoring our retirees, beginning at 6:30, so this year is a, is a break from what we did last year. If you remember last year, we honored in a virtual sense from the Gilbert H. Hood Library. I remember that night because I had to go to the emergency room, and I was late coming. Austin, you took over and did a fine job for that. We look forward to honoring our retirees, incredible service to our children of Dairy, most importantly, to our school district and to our entire communities. That begins at 6:30. It will be a little different than, say, two years ago in the years past, we have to do, we have to organize in a COVID-safe fashion because of food and so forth, but Susan Braskis and Christina Lovelcheck have already organized that with Kathleen Holtzman in terms of like, say, food preparation and food to go, in other words, and we're going to use the gymnasium, so it's a little bigger environment, and invitations have been sent out, and Kathleen Holtzman is waiting for responses. So we get to honor in-person this year, which is another, you know, step in the right direction is what we call it. So I know some of our parents are, parents and community members and family members are wondering, are we, are we moving towards stepping in the right direction? And I say some of these celebrations that are being pulled in-person this year compared to a virtual sense, I believe we are stepping and moving in the right direction, and I think these are pure examples of, of that being done. And lastly, there will be no school Monday, May 31st in honor of Memorial Day. On behalf of our entire school district, I would like to take the opportunity to reflect on this special day and extend our, extend our most sincere gratitude for those who have passed in military service to our country. I hope you're able to enjoy some time with your families this coming weekend. Any questions?
I have just one question on your reopening plan. First, I hope you get some guidance from the state before you can do that, but is it possible this year, if we could get a version history as one of the appendix? Because with a living document, it's kind of, it's a lot easier if you want to go back and see the changes in one place within the document.
So you want a version history?
Just a place, like I said, as an appendix, just, the updates that you usually give here, just as a quick reference, that someone, if they go to the document, they can see, oh, so this was in the beginning, but because of the recommendations through medical, this is a, you know, change that has been made. I think it would be helpful to see instead of, somebody goes, well, I was looking for this, I know it was in that document, but they can't see it anymore because it is a living document.
Sure, yeah, we can make that recommendation, and I can make that recommendation to our team. We have some of our team members right here, a few of them, right, about half of them right here. Yes, we have, we have continued to update the document and every change, but it's not a version history. That's, I think that's the difference, we have continued to update input.
And I, I think that's great that it is a living, it's constantly being updated, but you have to go back to school board meetings to see exactly what was changed and when.
Sure. I'd rather have it asked now than, than later. Sure, yep, thank you for that suggestion. Appreciate it.
Does anyone have any other questions for Mary Ann? If not, then I will pass the floor to Jane.
Okay, I will give an update on, on S R 3 that Mary Ann referenced. Like she said, we have to do a reopening plan and a very detailed document in order to receive our S R 3 funds, and that's really just the, kind of a setting the stage application in order to receive them. That does not, that's not even the grant writing process for each of the components of that grant, so each, each time we're going to request funds, for example, if we were going to hire additional counseling services, a lot of what our awesome counselors talked about tonight, say we were going to hire additional services for them or additional programming, I would have to write grants for that as part of the effort, S R funds, or if we were going to do some additional HVAC units, that's all part of the grant writing process. But what we're working on right now in our office is just the reopening plan required to even be considered for S R 3. So we actually just got the amounts for S R 3, which originally, I think that they had roughly calculated the 2.33%, and I think that changed a little bit with the allocations. They just put them out, the new numbers. So right now for Dairy, they're projecting that phase one allocation for Dairy for S R 3 would be $5,249,762.83. The draft amount for S R 3 for phase two, because there'll be two phases to S R 3, that amount is $2,704,423.27. So those two, phase one, phase two, together, for Dairy totals, $7,954,186.10. Again, estimate on the phase two, but phase one sounds like a true allocation. Tomorrow, they are doing training, again, from 3 to 4, so I will be attending that virtual training, and we'll have more information on the grant writing, what we will propose and bring to the board on how we may spend some of those funds. what we will propose and bring to the board on how we may spend some of those funds. We're still only in S R two funds right now. And part of the S R two funds that we're working on, again, our summer program that we're going to be doing, additional tutoring that we'll be providing for our students. I know we're looking at cleaning up the air ducts. We've talked about some additional HVAC work. And because of the timing of the physical assessments, and they would be doing a full assessment of our HVAC units, we're hoping to, once we get the results of that, be able to use some of the S R two funds for that. But we're hoping to at least have some of our units cleaned. And we know that we're going to try to at least, if you remember during the budget process, we had put forth one of the big units here that we wanted to have replaced. We'd like to have that in S R two, which I think was fifty thousand dollars to have that unit here, which was the last unit up here that had to be replaced. So, we're still working on S R two. The original S P S R F funds, which were one and two, those have already been spent and allocated. And those all had to be spent before December thirtieth. S R one, we have until September of this coming year to spend. And we've already allocated funds towards that. So, now we're into the S R two. And then we would move on to S R three. So, it's still going to take us a while to, to fully spend S R two. And the S R three is obviously with such a large amount of money, that's extensive planning and part of the reopening plan. And you have several years in order to expend those funds. So, that's, that's more of a long-term plan under Mary Ann's guidance and the board of how the board would want to move forward and spend those funds programmatically. So, right now, that's where we stand on S R three. And we'll find out more after tomorrow's meeting on how we'll be, how we'll be doing that. I also just want to touch on, Mary Ann talked about our, our opening positions. We will need those positions like food service and custodians for next year. So, since there's only a couple of weeks left for food service, but if people still want to apply, we will still take applications for the next year. Obviously, now that we have a, we're going to have a new director that now creates a vacancy for kitchen manager, and we still have already had a head cook position open. So, we're still looking to fill those. And we will still need custodians throughout the summer to get ready for another school year. I also wanted to remind you that we are continuing to go through our I R S audit. That is taking a lot of time. It started out with reviewing twenty eighteen. And it was, we provided all of our payroll. We had to provide all of our accounts payable, all of our ten ninety-nines, all of our W nines. And from that information that they received, then they pulled their samples. And that required a whole lot of information follow-up. Then, lucky us, they decided to do twenty nineteen. So, now we are, we've finished twenty eighteen. We are now working on the I R S audit for twenty nineteen. So, we are pulling that information. And just in case, you know, we might as well pull twenty twenty, in case they decide to ask for that. We're very fortunate, the person that we've been working with has been very easy to work with and no complaints with him or the process. It just takes a lot of time and a lot of resources of our staff at this time of the year. So, just wanted to let you know that we are working on that. And normally, we have a pre-audit for our regular district finances. We have not scheduled that yet. So, we may just jump into a, a full audit at the end of the year and just start sending things remotely and electronically. The, the team, sometimes when we switch, you know, we've, people have wondered about, oh, do you keep the same auditing firm? Is it good to ever switch up? Our auditors change so frequently. We, we really don't ever have the same team. And again, the auditor that we worked with last year has now moved on from the firm. So, we're working with all new auditors in that firm again. So, we'll start with a new team this year within the same firm. And so, we'll start sending them information as soon as we start our, our closing year end. So, we are working on closing out our, our general fund. Like Mary Ann said, we, we also just opened up our twenty-one, twenty-two budget in our financial software and budget sense. So, secretaries and administrators are able to start putting in their next year's budget. So, like she said, we are really in three different budget years right now. So, we're, we're in the current, we're putting in next year's, and we're going to be planning for the following year. So, we have a lot going on in, in finance. And I want to make sure I thank my staff. They've, they've really done an outstanding job. I also wanted to touch on, today you might have got a notice that we had donated food. We apologize, sir, but it was such short, short notice. We actually didn't even know it was coming. So, we always appreciate when we can get free donations. But it causes, you know, everybody to sort of drop everything to try to get it out to families. So, that was another good thing I should have said about Christina and Sue Baroskus and our team. They had to pivot and plan to get all that out while serving all the kids here today. And our, at least two or three of our maintenance departments spent the whole day out there putting boxes in people's cars. So, thank you to them as well. I wanted to let you know who the food actually came from. So, it's from the USDA Farm, Farmers to Families Program. And what came in the box, we, we did take a picture of the box so that we could get that out and we posted on Facebook, so parents would have an idea of what was going to be in the box. And most of the boxes had oranges, onions, mil, milk, yogurt milk, yogurt, cheese. Some of them had chicken wings, some of them had meatballs, bologna, hot dogs. So, they had a variety of those things. They were very large boxes. And we were happy to be able to donate to, to our Derry students and families. It is, it was boxed up and delivered by, and I hope I can pronounce the name of this company right, Katzur, Katzurabes Brothers Produce out of Boston, Massachusetts. They are the ones that put all the food together, bring them up in boxes. And so, we had two hundred and ten boxes of food delivered to us this morning. And of course, they're all perishables, so it had to go out fast. So, thank you to food service for getting that out quickly, maintenance for dropping everything that they had scheduled to do to put them out into cars, and Cliff Dancy for sending out the notifications, and Dave Minkle for putting it on Facebook. And Brenda, you also put it on Facebook for me as well. So, thank you for sharing that. And thank you to all the families that picked them up. I hope everybody appreciates the additional food that we were able to provide for everybody. I think that's a nice program that benefits our families. And I did mention at the last board meeting that we were going to talk about whether we were going to do the free meals. And I think with the funding, I, I think most school districts are going to go with the free meals for next year. So, if, unless there's some different consideration with the board, I, I'd like to move forward with, with doing that.
Do you need a motion on that or do you just want our approval?
I think we just need approval to do that, but I don't know. Did you, was there anything that you heard at the?
No, I don't, I mean, we could vote if you want to, but I don't think we need to. I just wanted to let you know that I did, I was able to talk to, I was in a Zoom call with other school board association members. And we did talk about the free and reduced lunch with Jean Shaheen. And I did tell her, you know, I, I told her, of course, we're very appreciative. But I really wanted to have another conversation about how to get parents to apply when they need to and to feel safe in doing that. And, you know, I talked about years ago, I, I was not on the board. I was, we actually had just moved here. And I got involved with East Derry before Ryan was there because I have the need-to-know person. But anyway, volunteers could help families to fill out the forms. Of course, people were vetted and there was a lot of confidentiality talk before you sat down with the family, but it definitely helped. And, you know, maybe that's a way to, I don't know that it can be done, but we, you know, I, I'm hoping to have that conversation with one of her, one of her assistants next week. Because, you know, I think if we can figure out a way to explain to people and to help them fill out those forms, because it's a daunting form. And, and it's not, that doesn't mean that people can't fill it, fill it out. It's just when you look at all those pages and you look at all those words and you think, holy smoke, I don't have time to do this and is it worth it? And what if I don't qualify? You know, all of those things. So, I think, I'm hoping that we can go back a little bit to the way we were able to help people more than just a couple of people in the district. Because that's hard for, you know, the select few to do their job and also to be able to help parents. And I think also, you know, they're more likely to sit down with another parent who can help them than an administrator or somebody that they don't know, right? So, I don't know, we'll see where it goes, but I just wanted to let you know. And I, I did, you know, thank her immensely for, for that help because it does make a difference. And it made a difference for our cafeteria staff. And I also highlighted the, the social, emotional aspect of it with the karaoke and the dog bones and the just smiling people and saying hello to the families that came and what a difference it made. So, I was talking about you guys.
And, and I'm not sure, and we could certainly delay it till the next meeting so that the board could have more time to think about it. My recommendation, if we were to move forward with continuing with the free food program for all students, I think one of the large, biggest benefits is with returning to school. I think it's worked really well with the process that all the schools have developed of the grab-and-go meals. It's worked really well with the social distancing and not having to stand in, in lunch signs. It's super organized, very coordinated. This school in itself, they, they eat in the gymnasium, some of them eat in here. Process goes really quickly and food is all prepackaged. So, it's, it's, it's all safe and sanitary. So, there's, there's a lot of benefits to it. And I believe that we're going to get a little bit more of a rebate. So, if you want to hold off on that, that's fine. But we may just want to know about doing the free and reduced applications and all that.
Do people feel like they want to hold off or are they ready to make a decision today? I mean, I think the sense, if I hear from everyone, people are okay with continuing that. I just actually had one question, which was, has there been any discussion at the federal level of if we're going to be impacted by, in federal grants, by more and more students not applying for the free and reduced lunch? Because I know that though, that designation is sometimes tied to federal grants. And I don't know if our numbers, if our grants are being impacted by those lower numbers. I know there's, there's, that's being addressed at the state level, but I didn't know or maybe what the deal is at the federal level with that.
So, it's interesting, actually, when I did that evaluation with Sherri White from, from the state, who actually, we just got notice that she's retiring from the state. So, we wish her well. She's been there a very long time and she's been outstanding to work with for the child nutrition program at the state. When I talked to her about my concerns about the free and reduced meals for next year, she, she reminded me that, you know, the federal government always reminds you that you should not always be counting on your free and reduced numbers for federal funds. So, we will still reach out to our families. I'll check, Brenda, to see what, what regulations. I know that right now, only myself and Susan are ones who can actually see approved applications. However, I'll look and see if, you know, where our parameters are on, on helping people. I know Susan does help them, but one person is a little difficult to have one person doing that. So, we are still going to reach out to families and still get applications should anything change. Because we still need to have those because we're still going to need those numbers to back up all of our, even the, you know, the application that we've been working on with Mary Ann asks you for your free and reduced numbers, everything repl-
And that's why I asked that question, because I know how vital those numbers are.
Yeah. So, a lot of programs that are geared towards parents, I think Cliff may have talked about it in one of his presentations, like even just free programs for parents to, free cable programs, if they qualify for free and reduced, they might qualify for that. So, it's tied to a lot. And, you know, Brenda's right, some people may not know they qualify. They may have a, a life-changing situation that happens that maybe one become, you know, one person in the family becomes unemployed and that changes their financial status. And, and that's where Free and Reduced picks up to at least have that component where families don't have to worry about free meals. So, the district will take care of that for next year if we can with the free food program. And I think that will be one less thing that we have to worry about as far as transitioning for students and, and staff.
Does anyone have any questions for Jane? If not, we will move on to committee's manifest.
Madam Chairman, I move the manifest amount total of one million, eight hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and four cents, the breakdown of which is one million, eighty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-six point ninety-nine cents of general payroll and seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and five cents of general expense.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Are there any other committee reports at this time? If not, we will move on to F Y I. In your packet, you have a letter to Senator Shaheen regarding the West Running Brook Middle School fields. In your packet, you also have a copy of the signed agreement that, agreement we made with, with the other towns in the conval lawsuit so that you can see what, what we agreed to. And now it would be the time for delegation and individuals. I do not see any delegation and individuals. So, I will move on to other business. Do any members of the board have any other business at this time?
I would just like to pay my compliments to Mr. Lott's, great appreciation of him. And I think the fact that he was able to put such good use to that Cheshire cat he ran over and make it into a tie, he's very crafted and skilled.
I have no idea what you're wearing, I don't want to know.
Is there any other business before the board? If not, I will welcome a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.